Alderman Baman.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
And Cora.
Okay. Uh, next time the invocation was by Darryl Jones of Crossroads Church. Pastor Lee Alderman Stratton.
Alright, that's pretty good. God, we give you thanks, uh, for the beautiful weather today and, uh, for an opportunity to be here. Thankful for, uh, for the folks that sit before us that are here to, uh, transact business, make decisions, and so many of them put in so many hours, uh, this weekend, uh, for the fair, and I know they've gotta be exhausted and tired. So, I just pray for strength and into the rest of the evening, and, uh, and just, uh, good minds and, uh, wisdom, discernment, uh, for the things that are before them, the things that are behind them, and the things that maybe they don't even know to anticipate, uh, just yet, uh, we pray over them, and, uh, and thank you for them and their, their service, uh, here to our community. So, we just ask, uh, for you to, uh, to be a part with the proceedings here, uh, may all be done for your glory in the name of Jesus.
Let us introduce the flag of the United States of America, and introduce a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, next item is approval of the agenda, any changes?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, no changes, and see, no proclamations, move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask the citizens who wish to address the board, please come forward to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Norm Combs, one zero zero eight Southwest Foxtail Drive, Grand Valley. I want to, uh, thank the mayor for trying to set the pathway of honor up with a decent spot. However, it rained on us for two days, and we didn't get as much good as we thought we would. Uh, the reason I'm up here, the biggest reason is, two meetings ago, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, the issue of Whiskey Tango came up, and I'd like to weigh in on it. Uh, Missouri has two almost cosmopolitan cities. They'd be cosmopolitan in a, either city, St. Louis or Kansas City goes to sleep. People work around the clock, they get off at varying hours, and some individuals like to, on Friday or Saturday, like to go out and socialize. And sometimes, the last job I had, we got off at twelve thirty, and if we wanted to socialize, we had an hour. Unless we had a three o'clock, three AM facility. Uh, however, I retired that job and I don't worry about it anymore. The reason, uh, we cannot be cosmopolitan is because we have no five-star hotels. In order to have a five-star hotel, your dining room has to be open twenty-four hours a day. And in order for a dining room to pay for itself, it has to serve all drinks of all types. And we'll never be cosmopolitan, I know we have a proposal to host a game, a World Cup game, and it's a tough sell. If we get contests that involves a team from one of the Pacific Rim countries, because those folks wanna come here, at dinnertime for them, and they may wanna have a glass of wine with their meal, they can't get it here at their dinnertime, because it's about five in the morning hour time, and that's something to take up with the state. Oh, lots of love to that. I've been to, uh, I've been around, the miles are short, I know. In the British Commonwealth of Nations, the places I've visited, you go to a pub, you gotta remember, when we got off of the ship, we had half of the paycheck, well, not a paycheck, they paid us cash, and we just went ashore, see how long it took to send it. And, uh, which wasn't much, didn't have much time, as low the pay was, as low as the pay was then, sorry. Uh, a public house is a bar that serves beer, ale. They closed at ten, and if you wanted to continue socializing, you had to go to a club, which did not open until eleven. So, the locals, when they were finished with their ale or stuff, they'd go home. And we weren't quite ready to go home, because we may have wrapped up a boiler at nine o'clock. And in an hour, you can't get much done in an hour, going through your last payday. So, but they had the restaurants. The restaurants were open earlier in the day, but they didn't close till eleven. But as long as you ordered something to eat, you could get a glass of wine with it, or whatever. And then, they closed, you went to the club, it cost a couple of dollars to become a club member to get in. And that's the way they did it, they did that in Plymouth, England, Port Macielan, Belfast, Northern Ireland, Ireland, Cape Town, South Africa, these are just a few places up there. Now, in the Caribbean, they worked things out a little different, because it was warm there. In the British countries, they, especially England, they serve beer at room temperature. I wanna tell you folks, room temperature is about thirty-four degrees, so it made a difference. It is nice around. Anyway, in the early days, operating with Task Force Seventy-Seven off the coast of Korea and the city of Japan, we would get underway a couple of times before they had the ceasefire, uh, and I've been that old, knowing, and I am. Anyway, we would go out making circles, circles, as for the aircraft carrier, and there's four of them out there, going in circles. We would place ourselves between a potential enemy submarine, we didn't know that they had any, they're gonna shoot at us, or fire torpedoes at us or not, we would put ourselves between the potential enemy submarine and the aircraft carrier. We were supposed to take the torpedo. However, we know that a destroyer only, the graph is only about twelve feet, whereas the carrier is about thirty feet, so if they set the torpedo to go underneath us, it hit the carrier anyway. But, uh, so they called it plane guarding, if a plane didn't make a decent landing, went into the water, we picked the pilots up, which we did, a few times. And they sent us over some ice cream when we did that, that didn't take the place of the subs, though. Uh, I would encourage you to work with the owners of Whiskey Tango to alleviate the problem. Back in the days, when, when we were out thirty days with the fleet, or the task force was pulled into port, you might have a carrier anchored out, a few destroyers, a cruiser, and Sopa, that senior officer present afloat, said, "Be back to the fleet landing at midnight." That's what they call Cinderella Liberty, that's where that term came from. And can you imagine three, four thousand sailors at the fleet landing at once? It's a disaster. That's the second dumbest thing you can do. I'll get to the dumbest thing here in a minute. Uh, I would encourage you to work with them. For one thing, three AM is also a dumb idea for certain ones. Again, this should be a cosmopolitan city that never sleeps. And the state needs to address that. The dumbest thing you can do is for a, for the owner of an establishment to sell me a beer at two fifty-nine and then tell me I gotta finish it by five after. That's really stupid. They should stay open, you need to work with them, I'd encourage you to work with them, stay open. The servers and bartenders are instructed in their alcohol training not to serve as minors, someone under twenty-one, and someone who is inebriated. They're encouraged to, someone who they think has had a little too much, please slack off a little bit, let up. Can we offer you something to eat? They should be serving food after alcohol sales is over with, instead of telling someone to drink up and get out. That's a problem. Now, after having said all that, the reason I'm supporting Whiskey Tango is that my wife and I own a nine-year-old pickup truck and a four-year-old small SUV, our personal property taxes are, for twenty seventeen, was eight hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Our real estate taxes on the house we lived in, we lived there for twenty years, twenty and a half years, amount to four thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars fifty-four cents. That's five thousand two hundred one dollars thirty-eight cents. We don't, more than half of that goes to the sewers. I support the sewers, but I don't wanna have to pay the whole bill. I don't, all the homeowners have to have to pay those. We're not really overflowing, but the business is to help out with the sewer. That's why I encourage you to work with them. It is a destination, by the way, and I'm through. And I will not be here at the next meeting, I'll be in San Antonio, probably be closing the bar there.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Can you move on to consent agenda?
Mayor, I need that we accept the consent agenda.
I'm with Alderman West, approve the consent agenda, got a second? Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion? See, now, now... I'm totally tongue tied right now. Okay, see now, all approved, please say aye.
Aye.
All vote, same sign. In the previous business, move on to new business. First item is Dollar General liquor license. Thank you, Mayor, members of the board, I will let Mrs. Bozenbaugh talk about this item, Teresa.
Mayor and members of the board, we have been approached by Dollar General, who you all know is currently in operation in town. Um, they simply would like to add on to their current liquor license, so they can sell on Sundays, so, um, they've turned in their additional, um, fees for that and paperwork for that, chief has signed off on that, um, and it would just be adding an additional class to their current license, so. Um, this is a, it would be a new issued license, a new class, so it does need to be, um, heard twice before the board, so.
Go twice, or just?
No.
Okay.
So, we'll hear it, yep. Anybody have any questions?
Questions, first, please. Alright, so it'll be on the agenda next time as well?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, next item then is City Hall parking lot.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this, uh, we were going through the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget preparation. Uh, we had one of our meetings, eh, that was specifically related to building maintenance, and we might have some line items in there, 'cause it's, it's, uh, hanging out now. Score repave on the City Hall parking lot, uh, as everybody knows, kind of, uh, this is actually, in the pictures behind, you can see, we're starting to have some, uh, subbase, subgrade failures that are leading to dips in the parking lot. We have problems with the water, uh, inlet, uh, inlets in the, the parking lot having sunk, or, you know, we've, we've paved up, and it's, we create quite a problem with cars hitting that as they drive through the parking lot. Uh, so, as I looked at, at the budget item for next year, um, I started thinking about what we have programmed for next year, and what we have programmed this year, and, uh, I, I told the, Rick, the department head, that I wanted to at least advise you guys of, uh, the need. So, the recommendation and the need is, is that next year, the parking lot needed to be resurfaced. Uh, he put, put a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in next year's budget for that. Uh, I said, "Let's go to the board and at least talk to them about the, the money that we had budgeted from the capital, uh, improvements, uh, fund this year." We, we actually budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, Snibar, uh, municipal complex design fees, just because of the time it has taken to get, um, to where we're at, to have the hole filled, uh, to be able, to be ready to move on with design. We're putting out, uh, the R F Q for design services from an architect right now. Uh, so the question is, do we want to reallocate, and it wouldn't have to be any board action to, as far as an ordinance, I just would need to know, is there enough interest from the board in, uh, moving forward with the repavement of this project this year, or is it something, uh, and, and using existing funds, or would you rather see this, uh, in the budget process and to discuss it, knowing that this will take, you know, a hundred and, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of next year's operating budget? Um, as you can see, it's just a edge mill, uh, with an overlay, and then we have a contingency fee, and then, uh, we're getting back up, or we're, we're getting other estimates, but to actually have it striped with thermoplastic striping is, is twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so with that, I will be happy to answer any questions, um... That's all, you, you have two different pictures here, and I'm sorry, that's, I, one, what I did fail to, to describe. The top picture is the blue, on the front page, with all of the blue is the parking lot, the entire parking lot, uh, to be paved and striped would be a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. If we wanted to use the same, uh, if we just wanted to spend the hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that, that we, that we have budgeted in this year, and that was going to be recommended for next year, we would cut off behind the community center, uh, where the parking lot's delineated with red instead of blue. I'm fairly certain I made that as confusing as possible for you, I did not mean to, but happy to answer any questions, entertain discussion about it, um...
What else is on our budget?
This is act, well, this isn't, this isn't part funding, so this would come out of, uh, I think it's fund two hundred and eighty, it's the capital improvement sales tax. Um, so, normally, what we do with that funding is, uh, about two hundred and thirty thousand, or two hundred and, is it two thirty?
Two fifty, gee.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand goes to, uh, the community center to pay the C O P certificate participations off for that. Uh, those will be paid off in twenty twenty, so we have nineteen's payment, twenty twenty's payment. While the remainder of that amount, we've, we've just, um, put that into the reserves, uh, for projects as, as they come up. So, the thought this year, when we went forward with budgeting, that's going to be, that's gonna be the line item or the fund that, uh, we use for some of the master planning and design fees for the Snibar complex. Uh, so we programmed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. So, to, to answer your question, there's, we, we have had a little bit of activity in that line item, but there's still a hundred and forty-six thousand, uh, budgeted, uh, award allocated to be spent in twenty eighteen.
Alderman Baman.
Would this be, how long would we expect, if, if, for example, if hypothetically, we did all the repairs that are blue in that top tile, how long would we expect those repairs to last?
Uh, what would be the service life out of?
I mean, I would expect that to probably go another fifteen years, roughly, twelve to fifteen years.
To, to add to that, if we have future plans to have a facility outsell, is this money worth saving, depending on what happens with this facility?
Yeah, it all depends on what, what happens with it, you know, if somebody comes in and they wanna bulldoze it, then yeah, we would never, we wouldn't recoup it, uh, out of that. Uh, that's something that, that we talked about, it's something that we're weighing, trying to decide what's the best use. I mean, currently, as it sits, it's not going to, it's going to require maintenance before we move away, otherwise, you'll blow a tire driving through the parking lot. Um, so that's, that's what got us moving on the, the, uh, resurfacing of the parking lot. Like I said, it was included in the budget. Um, so I'm not trying to cram this in this year, but my idea was, is that if we have the additional funding, let's have the discussion now. I guess it's probably a good question, Rick, is it, is there a, um, is there a temporary solution that would last, uh, say, four to five years to fix the problem out there?
The only other thing you could do, but we've already done it, is the, like a microseal type of procedure. The problem is, a lot of the damage to the surface asphalt is kinda beyond that. Typically, you wanna catch that before it gets to a certain point. Some of these pictures don't really show it, but you do have a lot of dips and, uh, segregation in the asphalt already, where the surface is pretty much done. And so, there isn't really a quick fix, there's no, I mean, if you, if you did that, you're still spending money, and you might Band-Aid it for a year, maybe, um, but it's not something that is... I, I wouldn't recommend normally doing it. Ryan does have a point, I mean, this is a question of, I think we do have to do something to it. The question is, maybe the extent of what, what we do. Uh, one of the things that I don't have before you right now, that I was hoping to get before the meeting, was the cost of paint instead of thermoplastic, for example, for the striping, and, um, but I didn't get, I didn't get a chance to get that, try to see if the cost can come down a little bit. Um, I don't know if there's really a good answer, other than just, this is really probably the best thing, because we're talking about milling most of the edges, just to make sure everything lines up correctly with the curbs. And so, and right now, the asphalt surface is about three inches thick, and so we took about six to eight cores to different locations in the parking lot. And so, what we would be doing is milling an inch to an inch and a half down to put in that new surface. And right now, if you look at it, there's about an inch of segregation on a lot of spots in the, in the asphalt currently, where we don't have a surface, we're kinda dealing with some of the subsurface asphalt, so you don't really have a quick fix for it. Um, a lot of those microseal processes really are just kinda like, um, kinda like a crack seal over the entire thing. It may help it hold together, but I think after the first snow and the first plow, you're, you're gonna see most of that scratch off, so... I, I mean, it is a judgment call, I mean, it is, do you spend the money, and, you know, that's the, that's the question, I think we're here to...
Yeah.
...talk about.
So, I, like, hopefully, I, we, we answered your question, and beyond that, I mean, I, there's, it, it needs fixed, uh, we need to do something to the parking lot, we, we feel like the micro, uh, sealing is probably gonna be a short-term Band-Aid that we go back to do, and it still doesn't, it still doesn't address, uh, the root problem. Of course, you hate to spend this type of money whenever you're thinking about, uh, relocating, um, within a five-year period. Uh, but it's, that's, that's kind of the two decisions, you know, do we Band-Aid it on a yearly basis? Keep its, I, I think it's a pretty rough condition right now, or do we go ahead and spend the money to fix and have a, a nice parking lot, um, smooth surface that's going to last? You know, i- and it's a crapshoot, whether somebody's going to be, when we're at that point, if somebody's just interested in this as commercial property, or if they're interested in the facilities. I think it would take a special user to be interested in the facility as it is right now. Uh, but with that in mind, you know, there's, you're, I, I don't know that we would recover it one way or the other. Um, on the other end, I don't know that we would, we would get another hundred thousand out of it in five years for repaving the parking lot, it's just kinda more a ca, cost of housekeeping, uh, in our minds.
When was that patch done?
When was the microseal?
I think that was done probably in two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven, yeah, and then, I, I'm not aware, has it ever been, it's probably never been overlaid. Yeah, so we've been in it for seven, seventeen years, and it's...
Yeah, we, we've had patches completed, and we've done, there's several areas out there that have been patched, and there's several areas that still need to be patched now, that, uh, we would have to do.
Well, is it, my understanding that this money is dedicated to, to the facilities here? Or did I hear you say that it could go into the general fund?
It's capital improvements fund, so it's for any capital improvement within the city. So, that could be, um, you know, half of it goes, over half of it goes to pay for the community center annually. Uh, we try to, you know, it's sidewalks, curbs, gutters, uh, it could be sewer, transportation, water.
So, um, for, for my view, and I think you, you could tell that before the meeting, said it, it's, it's really hard for me to spend the money on a facility that we're not gonna be in, we just don't know how long, but we are gonna move away from it, where we could be spending it on other projects within the community. Um, and so, that, that's a tough call for me. I'd rather patch it and hope that it lasts for as long as we're gonna be here. It depends on how much to patch it, and so how much is a patch, how much is it gonna cost for something?
Well, like, if you're talking about microseal, you're still, well, you're still looking at about thirty-eight thousand, maybe forty thousand, or something like that. If you're just talking about patching the bad areas, uh, we would, uh, I don't know if you don't have a number, we'd have to do the measurements.
No, it's not. The ultimate, what we want it to look like, or what we want it to do, but at the same time, we have other places we could spend that money that would make our citizens a lot happier out there.
Well, it would, a roadway, I would say, I mean, I don't think that it's going to, this, this extent of money, I don't know that we would be able to do more than one additional road on the C I P, which I understand, I, I completely hear your point, that it's, at least it's one more road. I guess the, the view that I take is that this is the central asset of the community, um, the symbol of the community. Do we wanna run the parking lot ragged and have people driving through it, you know, blowing tires and running shocks? I mean, be in that rough condition in exchange for one roadway, um, when we know, I mean, I, I hear it all the time, people want, you know, they, they want us to do the entire C I P right now, it's, unfortunately, it's not practical. We do the best that we can with the transportation funding. Um, in fact, within the last eight years, I mean, we've seen a complete revamping of tran, transportation. It was bankrupt, uh, and in the red annually, and we're actually doing more projects than we've ever been able to do, because we're specifically targeting, uh, those transportation projects. So, I, I understand the, the point that you make, and I, I, there's a little bit of that feeling with me, too, you know, I hate to spend, spend money on it, but it, um, looking at the amount of money that we're spending, and we're considering the amount of citizens that we service in this facility and over at the community center, uh, it seems like a, an, an investment into, you know, the, the assets of the community.
What, what's the action for this item tonight?
Really, I just, I, I would like to know if the board would, um, be interested in, in staff pursuing this project in, in twenty eighteen instead. Uh, I would have, I would come back to you with a resolution, just affirming that action. Um, within the, the, the budget, the city administrator has authority to reallocate money, money from one line item to another, as long as it stays in one fund, um, so I can transfer the funding, uh, and, and use it for this. But you guys have already seen a, a resolution for all of our C I P projects, I would like to, to just pass a resolution of support, showing that you want this added as well, where we put it back into the, the twenty nineteen budget.
Would it be possible to add some info, add some cost information for this patching option? Just to see what that would look like?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we could go out and get measurements, um, probably, if, if we came back to the board, we could be, uh, we could bring this back to the board as a, a, a future meeting, it's gonna have to be probably the next meeting, though, just because of the timing on the asphalt overlay project. Uh, we could have cost estimates for, uh, the patching that needs to occur, the microseal, and, um, as addition, in addition, we can have the paint, uh, amounts in there, that way it gives you several different options to look through and, um, base a decision off of. So, no decision right now, uh, would just keep us, I'd put it back into the twenty nineteen budget, um, otherwise, we'll come back in the future.
Um, just to be clear, the patching that you were talking about, and maybe, Jeff, you're talking about that, that would require milling, right, not just microseal?
Well, yeah, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily, I'm not really recommending the microseal. And the reason I say that is because it's kinda... And the reason I say that is because it's kind of just putting a little bit of asphalt tar on top of the segregated asphalt. I think that would be a waste. But in terms of the areas that we already have failures, and what it would take to actually deep patch those areas, is kind of what I would be looking at, I think. That's what I would recommend, if you're going to choose that option over this.
How about we prepare, we'll just prepare more information based off of deep strength patching, of the patches that need to occur out there. And then, any surface patching that may be necessary. And we'll compare that with the costs. By then, we'll have estimates also for paint instead of the thermoplastic.
Can I ask a question?
That's up to Mr. Mayor.
How soon am I going to be telling the people on Front Street that they're going to come over and looking at our street? Because, this last week, I even had to call the city. He got two, it is literally dividing down on the sides of the road, which isn't too good. And he said the only way that, that way is gone, that it could be fixed, because it's going to have to fix the whole road. And that's how I told my district there, with the classified of the, you know, mad about this. I don't understand, that section of the road, do we need a little more extra support? Because basically, that's where it's coming down on parts of the road.
You're talking about just the edge of the road breaking away, essentially?
Technically, yes.
Rick, like, on that project, CIP-wise, how far, it's in the five-year, beyond category?
Currently, it's beyond the five-year for the reconstruction.
Okay, well, no, because once they see we're spending the money that they never heard about, I'm going to get green.
No, I understand that. I think, when we look at the full scope, do you remember off the top of your head, Rick, what the estimate is for the additional phase?
Yeah, it's hovering at least around two million.
Two million dollars for the reconstruction. And, what do you think reasonably, Kathy? I know, it's kind of putting you on the spot, but to see those proceeds recouped out of the tip, I mean, we're going to have to have all, we have three of the corners that are running right now, but...
They pretty much all have to be operating to have enough money to pay any kind of debt service on that big of a project. Well, I just, I'm obligated to this, to that bonding, but you would be able to collect from one, three, or four.
Well, we'll keep, we'll keep working towards a solution for you, too.
Well, I, I asked the guys, they just told me that it was going to have to be paid for again. So, but I called them up and gave them the exact address where it started, where it stops, and then a little more down at the other end, but, okay.
Hang in there, Riddus.
I'm trying, I just want the other people to hang in. I don't want the iron feathers.
Yeah, I know that, neither do I. So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, just an indication, if you guys would like me to come back with further information at the next board meeting.
That sounds like so.
It might be, it might be nice while we're talking about this, to also look at the other planned pavement repairs? And kind of just refresh and review that, that plan, too?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be something we can do?
Yeah, we can just bring, we'll just bring the transportation, CIP projects, show you guys what we're doing next year, what we're doing this year, what we're going to do next year, and then in subsequent years. We have it planned out, a certain amount of streets, or certain roads every year, up to the five-year point. And then, we've identified five years and beyond. That's, you know, where everything else goes.
No presentations, no public hearings. Move on to ordinances.
This is Bill B eighteen dash fifteen, in ordinance of the town of Green Valley, serving annual tax levies, in calendar year, general municipal government operations, and general obligation that park maintenance is public health.
I believe that Bill B eighteen dash fifteen be approved for its first reading and brought back for its second reading by Title One.
I have motion, Norman West, to approve Bill B eighteen dash fifteen for its first reading, bringing it back by Title One for its second reading. Drive a second.
Second.
Norman, headly.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as you guys know, at this point, this is the levy that we talked about. We've tried to proceed with this out of an abundance of caution, to give everybody plenty of time to, you know, seek public input. But essentially, what this does, as we've discussed in the, the public hearing and the workshop that we held, is it rolls back the debt service levy ten cents, from a dollar seventy-two, one dollar seventy-two nine four cents, down to a dollar sixty-two ninety-four. So we're able to do that by, we have essentially four levies. We have the general municipal operation levy, which is at fifty-five point five four cents per hundred. And then, the retirement of geo-debt, which has always been our high one, was over a dollar. It's now going to be ninety point two five cents per hundred. The park fund will be twelve point two six cents. And the public health fund will be four point eight nine cents. Again, for a dollar sixty-two point nine four per hundred. Anyone have any questions?
Any non-therapists, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Please, your first mayor. Bill B eighteen dash sixteen, with first reading, ordinance waiving and or reducing certain plan review, will then permit inspection and tap fees associated with construction by political subdivisions within the city limits of Green Valley.
I move that we accept Bill number B eighteen dash sixteen for its first reading, and bring it back for its second reading by Title One.
I have motion, Alderman, to amitigate, steps Bill B eighteen dash sixteen for its first reading, bringing it back by Title One for its second reading. Drive a second.
Any discussion?
I'll give the presentation in a second.
I want to know if I should abstain from this.
Since he sits on the school board and the Board of Alderman, he's asking if, I don't know if there's any material gained by it.
I don't think so. He just found it personal, so I don't.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I've been talking with the school district and other taxing jurisdictions for quite a while, with the school district, for the longest. I'm glad to see you here, Dr. Snow, appreciate it. This conversation actually was with Dr. Snow and Dr. Moss previously, if that gives you an idea of how long this has been going on. But, the city, you know, there's, there's two different philosophies, or ways, ways to think of collecting fees from other political subdivisions. I've always leaned more naturally to not collecting tax pain, taxpayers' funding from one to the other, unless it's a significant fee. For example, all the taxing authorities, authorities in Green Valley pay for their water, they pay for their sewer, and they pay for all normal utilities. What I've always had more of an issue with is, or more of a concern with, is charge and permit fees for expansion and construction from CJC, or the library, or the school district. And as we've gone through and done some review, I mean, there's not a tremendous amount of communities that are doing this. And hopefully, everybody had a chance to read my memo. It was, you know, two pages long, it probably puts you to sleep. But there were only a handful of communities that I was able to find that waived construction permit fees for other taxing jurisdictions within their city limits. To me, it seems like you're going to go partner with the growth that Green Valley School District has right now. The fact that they're adding different additions to the high school. They have a master plan that they're working on. And every year, is, you know, as soon as, as soon as their levy is approved, they move forward with the planning, well, they're ready to plan, they're ready to construct. And as I go through the budget and see, you know, what some of those costs to the, to these agencies are in relation to, you know, what it really costs us, I just feel like it, we're probably being less, we're probably collecting a lot more of the fees than what the intention was. So with this ordinance, I'm going to, I'm kind of kind of like the mayor. I think it's being granted, so essentially, what we did was, I came up with a methodology to waive and reduce certain fees for the, for four taxing jurisdictions. Really, the only reason that we picked the four is that they're the four that we do business with, when it comes to building or construction permits. So Green Valley School District, Mid-County Public Library, Jackson County Fire Protection District, and then actually, Jackson County, the county up. In the recommendation, what's in this ordinance before you, is that I recommend that we waive all plan review, inspection fees and permit fees. So, that amount of money is captured in the general fund, whenever a building, whenever new construction comes. In your E-Packet, we also included the compensation, I'm sorry, the comprehensive fee schedule for your review. But just, a quick overview is that on projects, commercial projects, we charge for anything less, over fifty thousand dollars, we charge point eight percent of construction value for a permit. And then we charge commercial plan review fee of sixty-five percent of the permit fee. So, the handoff that I just gave you shows what the school district has paid for each one of their projects over the last several years in permit fees. What I am recommending is that we waive the permit fee, that first column right there. And at the very bottom, you'll see GBHS addition, sixty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. That's the current project that they have, that they're constructing out there. And knowing that this had been in the works for a while, and that we had had several discussions over the years with administration and with some of the elected officials, rather than charging the school district sixty-two thousand dollars, we said, you know what, we're going to go ahead and issue the building permit. We're going to put this permit fee into deferment, until the board has made a decision as to whether they're going to waive fees. So that's the first column that you have right there, that goes into the general fund. The other portion of construction and development in Green Valley is the water and sewer tap. That's not quite as easy. I don't, I don't feel like we can just waive that one hundred percent, because there's actually debt service that's associated with those sewer and water taps. And essentially, what you do is that if you waive all of your sewer and tap fees for anybody, you're putting more burden on, on the folks in Green Valley, because the debt is not being repaid as quickly. So, in order to waive all the fees for, or all the, in order to work on reducing the fees for sewer and tap locations on projects for these organizations, we had to kind of take a prorated approach to it, the easiest way. And hopefully, this is all making sense. If you got through the memo, this is, should be clicking with you. But, the school district, Green Valley School District, has a political citizenship of eighteen thousand people, for example. The 2010 census for Green Valley was twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-four. So what we want to make sure that we do is that we waive tap fees for the folks that live within the school district and within the corporate city limits of Green Valley. So we, we identify, okay, of those eighteen thousand people that are patrons of the school district, twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-four of them live within Green Valley. And so at that point, we're able to tell how many of their residents are Green Valley citizens. And that's how we come up with the amount that we're discounting, sewer and tap fees. That way, in theory, when you work through the methodology, and you look at, you look at it on paper, if you waive these amounts that are, that are called out within the ordinance, the folks that live outside of the city limits are, in theory, paying their way, or their share for the development that Green Valley has done on their water and sewer infrastructure to get it there. So, just the simple example that I put in my memo, is that the Green Valley School District is seventy-one percent of their population lives within city limits. So if they had a sewer or tap fee that was ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars on a project, that would be discounted seventy-one percent. So their sewer or tap fee would be two thousand nine hundred dollars, instead of ten thousand. So, and on the back page of my memo, you, this is included, that the populations aren't included in the ordinance, because that's kind of a day-by-day changing document, or the population numbers are day-by-day changing. But in my memo, we call out that the Green Valley School District has eighteen thousand. CJC has approximately eighty thousand residents. Mid-County Public Library has approximately seven hundred and eighty thousand residents in their district. And Jackson County has six hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and fifty-eight. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. Really, just a chance for the city trying to firm up those partnerships that we, that we have by, you know, not taking one money out of, out of one pot, and putting it into the other.
Any questions or discussions?
Responsible for breaks, water sewer breaks? On their property, private property, yes. You know, they would, they would still be responsible for the same. This wouldn't waive any liability that exists.
I'm heavy. I understood what the memo says, just want to make sure that although we wouldn't be charging, ideally, we wouldn't be charging a permit and plan review fee, we would still be doing plan reviews?
Yes, yeah, so it still goes through, yeah, the exact same process of plan review. We still issue the permit, we still go out and do all of the inspections. I know that in some of the examples that I, that I checked, the cities actually stepped completely away. I said, okay, we're not, we're waiving fees, but since we're waiving fees, you have to hire a third-party person to come in and do it. That is a cost no more. So, yeah, this, we will still maintain the same authority that we have right now over building permit issues.
Any additional questions? Any non-therapists, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Please, your first mayor.
Next up, resolution?
This is Resolution R eighteen dash thirty-eight, a resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City in Green Valley, very appointing for Ryan, very ancient city, for a three-year term.
I move that we accept Resolution number R eighteen dash three-eight, as read.
I have motion, Norman, to approve Resolution R eighteen dash thirty-eight. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Norman Coleman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Mr. Bray is in attendance tonight, correct, Shannon? And he is actually a new appointment. He's going to be replacing the position that was vacated by Mr. Nolte back in March. Would you like to at least have him stand up so we could recognize Mr. Bray? All right, there he is. He can put the face of the name.
Yeah, this would fulfill the last vacancy on the park board right now, so it brings back up to nine members. And Ryan's actually attended several of the most recent park board meetings as well, too. So, happy to have him on.
Questions? You have a question about this?
No, I want to know if our city taxes are going to go down. That's the question I bet I'm going to hear.
What's that have to do with this? Yeah, I'm talking about this right here, this resolution. Well, that's what I'm asking about. All right. Any questions, all non-therapists, say aye. All pose the same sign.
Take care, Mayor.
All right. Next up, city attorney's report.
Attorney's report.
Next up, city administrative staff reports.
Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, first we have, uh, Mr. Davies.
Um, Mayor and Board, just real briefly, uh...
Shannon, I'm sorry to interrupt. Jake? Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Jake, I could not see you back there until you, you stood up. Jake is from Mid-Continental Public Library, and he was tonight representing, uh, the library. I realized as soon as you stood up that you were here representing the library, so I wanted to introduce you and let the board know that you were here in support of that ordinance.
Well, I appreciate that. We appreciate your support, and, uh, we're looking forward to building a new branch out in the, uh, in the community area with, uh, everyone else working, which is, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm really looking forward to the, the, the next twelve months.
I, I have to as well. I need to get glasses, so. Sorry for the unorthodox interruption and hollering for you to come back in.
I'm rubbing off on him.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Nice to see you.
I'm sorry, Shannon.
All right, just, just real quickly, uh, we, uh, wrapped up another successful plomatic season for Green Valley Pool this year. From a, a revenue perspective, very similar to, uh, years past or comparable years past of what we normally collect on a, on very hot, dry, uh, June, July, and, and August. So, uh, we're happy with the pool season, and, uh, as you all know, it opens up Memorial Day weekend. Closes to humans on Labor Day, and then we have the dog swim the day after. Have great attendance for it as well, too. So, uh, just letting you all know, our, our pool season is wrapped up, uh, for the twenty eighteen season, and we're ready for the season next year.
All right. Um, Teresa.
The Community Prayer Breakfast will be on Friday, November second, uh, six thirty a.m. And we will have a table there, so I will be sending out a poll to see who is interested in attending that. Or if you already know you're interested, you can catch me after the meeting and let me know. That's November second at six thirty in Blue Springs.
It is an early morning, but we encourage everybody to come out. We've, you know, got a table for ten. If we need to buy more, we're happy to do that, uh, to the Adams Point Conference Center in Blue Springs. If you want to, uh, get to there. It's, uh, Community Prayer Breakfast, essentially. It's just, um, really some Jackson County leaders and business owners getting together, and they usually have a speaker, uh, a very, um, live, so, uh, it's pretty well within that, I'd say, five to six hundred people on any given year. All right. Uh, the only other thing that I had is wanted to let you know that the budget, uh, workshops, we're looking at doing budget workshops the last, um, workshop, four workshops, whichever we need, the last two weeks of October. So as it sits right now, um, we will have the budget out. My hope is to have the budget out by October first to the board. Uh, but if we look at the last two weeks, um, I'm comfortable giving you the, the, the budget with, with a week or two's notice before those, those hearings or the workshop that we have, so. Uh, probably be looking at the dates to send out, just, you know, to take and, to reserve, uh, an evening. We're gonna try and, you know, the twenty-second is actually a board meeting. We want to do it separate from a board meeting, just because it would be nice to go through the budget uninterrupted. Uh, so our other alternatives are gonna be the other evenings. I'll be sending out, do the, do the poll, just to see who's available what night. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, supporter, Alvin reports and comments. Alvin Stratton.
Alvin Totten.
Alvin Coleman.
I just wanted to, uh, give a shout out to you, Mr. Mayor, and all those that were involved in the fair. Um, it was a rainy day on Friday, and, uh, and the parade was a little bit rainy, but it turned out awesome. I was really surprised to see as many people out on the parade route as it was. But once again, you did a really, really good job. Appreciate all the effort. That's all I have.
Alvin Totten.
Well, I think everything went pretty good, and, uh, I know that we didn't have any promotion. We, I will say thank you for the people that shared all those nice aluminum cans that came to my house, because we really had fun with them. I must add, too.
Alvin Headley.
My comments were going to be the same, Jeff, just to, you and I, put an enormous amount of, um, I don't think, I don't think folks realize, but, uh, I know it's a pretty...
Ditto. Yeah, I did a fabulous job, actually. Under the circumstances, uh, couldn't have been better.
It was a little rough.
Alvin Bannan.
Just a couple of things, uh, some school district updates, um, kind of settling into the rhythm of the school year, where they're making some staffing adjustments based on updated enrollment numbers. And, uh, some of their upcoming business will be also similar to us tonight. They'll be, uh, adopting their levy rate, uh, in the next few weeks. I'm not certain yet what that will be, but anticipating some, somewhat of a, a rollback or an adjustment or something. Let me spread it to the...
Next up, uh, Mayor's report. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, everyone. A lot of people in this room had, you know, a big part to do with the fair. And, yeah, it was a, it was a mess on Friday. We didn't get anybody stuck, so we didn't get the field tore up, which is good. Jerry didn't come after me today, so it's always a good sign, so we can, you know. It was wet on Friday, that's for sure. Uh, you know, I think, uh, yeah, Friday was pretty much a washout. Saturday after two o'clock, it got really busy, and everyone had a good time. I mean, just to kind of give you, you know, the fair, the actual carnival part was down, was down about sixty percent from last year, just to kind of show you. Think on Friday, they made, they, they did, they did about two hundred dollars in business on Friday. So it was, you know, Friday was pretty much a loss, was a lost day, but, you know, five K went well. We had a lot of good comments. They wound up having a hundred and sixty-seven runners and walkers. So, uh, the running people said that they had nothing but positive comments afterwards about our police department and our VIFs and how well they handled the course and how well the course. Everyone liked the course, it's flat. The suit's flat in the vehicle I was riding in, so, uh, Matt and his son ran it, so, but, uh, you know, it's, it's flat. So they said, word of mouth will be big. They said next year, expect probably two hundred and fifty-plus runners in it. So if we, you know, did again, I would expect. Parade was a little wet, but we still had, you know, good crowds, good parade. I saw people brought out there, popped up canapes and lined those parkways, so that was, I need to see, they're all clear of it, you know. And, like I said, the actual, you know, fair itself after two o'clock, it got sunny and, and got busy, and, you know. Tosh did a great job with the, with the beer garden, keeping, I mean, we had, it was standing room only in there Saturday night.
Yeah, it was crazy, Saturday night.
They were standing pretty much anywhere, you could find a spot in there Saturday night, so it got good, so. Overall, it was good, you know? We got our year with the, uh, rain in, so it should not rain on us anymore. Uh, actually talking to, you know, Eddie was giving us a hard time, Eddie Tappel, because, you know, he's always been in charge of the parade. I don't know how many years he really got up to this year. He said that it had never rained in all the years he did the parade. And I said, you know what that means? That means you're doing it next year. But, uh, but he didn't, uh, didn't think that, but. So we got the rain out of the way, so we'll, sunny, mild days next year that we're looking forward to, so. Uh, that's all I have, I believe we have.
Need for executive for legal, Mr. Mayor.
Executive session for legal.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session then?
So moved.
Motion, Alvin Coleman.
Second.
Second, Alvin Headley. Any discussion?
See, no, no, fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. Alvin Stratton. Alvin Coleman.
Yes.
Alvin Totten.
Yep.
Alvin Headley.
Yes.
Alvin West.
Alvin Bannan.
Yes.